And that was approved at some point by the fire department. It wasn't, the depth was not sufficient and it wasn't in accordance to regulation. So, the problem, the site has not been without problems. There have been certain problems at the site, whether with document falsification or actual tank installation issues. So, it, you know, it certainly hasn't been a smooth ride.
Somebody make a motion?
For either the town or the owner.
You want to make a motion?
To follow the town manager's recommendation?
Correct.
That will be sent to them?
Yeah. Second?
Okay, in a second. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item number nine, signatures of EMS letter to the legislators, and those letters are here for signatures.
These are, these are letters that deal with the, the issue of Blue Cross and Blue Shield, trying to go around the municipality who provides the service and give direct reimbursement to the patient, which would really hurt our revenue stream because the patient, the patient gets money from a insurance company. They're more likely to cash it and spend it than they are to turn it over to the town of Abington or any community for that matter. And I think that this letter tries to address that legislatively.
I thought I read somewhere where they voted to deny that, just recently, within the last week. But that, that's fine, they'll send a letter anyways.
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't. I've been under the care of a doctor.
Okay, so if everybody wants to sign that letter, the letters to each of the legislators. Item number 10, implementation of no parking signs on Ashland Street and set hours of no parking.
The board can do that, you are road commissioners. I don't know if there's a process in place. In some communities, they do have a public hearing that invites the residents for which they're, are gonna, you're gonna put up these signs because it will become enforceable, which means that if a resident who lives on the street has people over for a party and the party is at seven o'clock at night and the police officer goes by and tags every one of the cars after seven o'clock, you may have a very angry homeowner.
Is this for the entire Ashland Street?
No.
No?
Kenny asked if this be put on the agenda because I guess he had some complaints about...
I had numerous complaints from residents of King Street, which is a street that runs parallel with Rude Team.
Yeah, yeah, I know where that is.
Okay. And the complaints are that people park on Ashland Street to visit that restaurant and they're blocking the line of traffic when people are coming out of King Street and people are coming up.
So you're talking Ashland to King Street?
That's my thoughts where he is.
And I think...
I don't think there's any residents there per se.
I don't know.
Did the police, the police chief looked at this or has been looking at it as that the case?
Yep, the police chief has, no problem with it.
He supports it.
He supports it, the highway superintendent supports it.
Well, my concern is, people don't park there, they're gonna stop parking on King Street. But is it, is that, I mean...
Well, it's, it's like a gla, it's like water. It'll travel the path of least resistance. So if the next street doesn't have the same restrictions, then you may have, you may, they'll just, you'll move the problem to the next street over.
It's the pleasure of the board, if any.
Oh, I'm not so sure about the, the public hearing. And I certainly want to report with the police chief being a chief safety officer.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if you need a public hearing. I don't know what the process here is. Some communities require a public hearing when you have parking restrictions in residential when you're...
It's probably a good idea, my, my feeling.
It would affect the business, apparently.
Oh, yeah.
I know that they're restructuring their parking lot as we speak. I've, I've been by there and I think, it's my understanding that it's the employees that park on Ashland Street because the, the restaurant isn't even open and there's cars parked there. So that creates more, more spots for the customers in the parking lot. That's my understanding. I would have no problem with, you know, approving this tonight and then maybe meeting with the residents of King Street, but not, when parking on King Street becomes a problem.
What are your thoughts, what are your thoughts on a public hearing? I, I think, I mean, you're impacting the business, you're impacting the neighborhood somewhat.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having people being able to have a say before we do something like this, you know?
I have no problem.
That's my...
I would just like to get it done sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we could do it in July.
Yeah, we can notify the residents, we'll send them, we'll, we'll get, you know, the people in the area.
Yeah.
If you want to, you know, like we do for, our public hearings for...
The butters or whatever.
Yeah, butters.
And you may even want to go up Ashland Street a little bit because people will stop parking past King Street on Ashland.
Does the police chief have an actual proposal as to what he would like to see done?
No, we didn't get to that detail.
No. If he wants us to, we can as well.
Maybe we could have him develop a proposal.
Come up with a proposal and then we'll meet with the residents.
And then you have a public hearing to air that proposal.
Yeah. I think it's always a good idea to do that because then residents can't say, "I wasn't informed."
Right.
Now, what are these signs doing in front of my house?
Yes, yeah.
They were never here before. Why are they here now? When, when did you take this vote? You did it in the middle of the night.
All right, so why don't we do that, set it up for, see if Chief Majewski can come up with a proposal as to where he thinks the restriction...
From a public safety perspective, you want the signs.
Where the restrictions should be and then...
And then we'll, we'll send that information out to the residents along with notice of a public hearing.
Yeah.
So that they're prepared.
Okay. Is that all right with everybody?
It's fine.
Item number 11, vote to affirm or reject the appointment of town accountant, Sue Moklin. John?
We, I think, what I'd first like to say is that we, we received a number of, of applications and I came in without clearance from the doctor to, to conduct the final interviews with, with respect to two qualified applicants. Now, the last applicant, the application that came into the town, I think, was what you said, June 10th? We had an ending date of June 15th, so I, we have not received any additional applications. When you advertise for a position of this nature, it's not a position that a lot of people will apply for because it requires you to, to have certain certifications as a, as a, as a public accountant or as a public financial person and there's not that many people who meet that criteria. We, at the same time, advertised for a network administrator and we have a tremendous amount of applications that have come in. And there's, one, one step that we had missed in the process and, and I think it was due to, to my being out and that was that we wanted some involvement in the selection process from the finance committee. The finance committee appointed a, a person. We weren't able to meet that schedule. We notified them late in the process, unfortunately, and we were willing to hold it up. The individual from the finance committee said that, you know, she didn't want to be, you know, hold up the process because we need somebody on as, as early as we can. Get them as of July 1st, we'd like to have somebody on, on board. And we interviewed two people that were really qualified and we have settled on Susan Moklin for a variety of reasons, which I'd like to go over with you. As you look at her resume, although she hasn't spent a lot of time in the public sector, meaning she's worked from 2008 to 2010 at, as a town accountant, chief procurement officer, and then she went to work in, at the Abrahams Group in the towns of Wellfleet and Harwich, analyzing financial impact of proposed consolidation of police and fire dispatch centers, which is an issue that has been on our burner for a while. At the town of Wellfleet, she did audit reviews, revenue procedures, analyzed policies and she worked for, in the town of Wareham, for the Abrahams Group doing analysis, reconciliation, reporting of the Wareham school activity accounts. So, she has a tremendous amount of both public and private experience and she's worked from 2011 to, to the present as a town accountant in the town of Blackstone. Now, I don't know her, but I have reached out to some of my peers and some of the information that is handwritten is Dory's handwritten information about the recommendations that we have received. And she has a bachelor in accounting and economics in Bridgewater State. She has an associate in accounting from Bristol Community College. She graduated from Bitterford High School in Bitterford, Maine. If I was to sum, if I was to sum, sum her up in a few words, I would say that this is a woman who will get whatever she's going after. If she wants to get her CPA, she'll get it. She is a go-getter. She, most of, of her education, although she has received it from institutions of, of higher learning, if she wants to know about what, what is going on at, at the collective treasurer's level, she'll take courses to learn the intricacies of the collective treasurer's office or the assessor's office. And she does that as a way of becoming familiar with all of the functions of financial management in the public sector. She teaches for the Municipal Accounting and Auditors Association and she teaches, she teaches, I think, reconciliation, cash reconciliation, which is a big issue for us. So, her education is sufficient. She has, she's certified as a governmental accountant. She's certified as she, as a procurement officer for supplies and services. She's certified for procurement of design and construction. She is certified in assessment administration. She's certified for grant writing and advanced grant writing and she teaches for the Mass Municipal Accountants Association and she teaches in the, in the area of cash reconciliation, how to properly reconcile cash. She, her familiarity with software is with Munis, Vadar, ACS 400, QuickBooks, Profix, MS Word, MS Excel, MS Outlook and MS PowerPoint, and these, these are Microsoft. And she's native English and French, which I hope she never has to use French, but if she does, she certainly will be, be able to do so. Her, she's associated with the Mass Municipal Accountant and Auditors Association, Plymouth and Bristol Norfolk County Accountants Association, the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Association of Public Procurement Officials, so she's licensed. This appointment is very important. You could see that she has received a number of endorsement letters or recommendation And she's not somebody that you could easily put something over on. I mean, she, she'll go by the book. She wants to teach people the proper process to follow, very similar to what we discussed in relationship to teaching our, our owners of, of dogs that they have to pick up after their dogs. But she, she, she's, she's very firm and I think that she's quite capable of straightening out some of the personnel issues that currently exist in, in the town accountant's office, which would be a very high priority on my part as well.
So this is before us tonight because the charter provides that Mr. D'Agostino, as the town manager, makes the appointment and then the board of selectmen has 14 days to basically veto that appointment or if we meet within that 14 day period and want to ratify the appointment, we also have the ability to do that.
To do nothing, I mean, in 14 days.
Well, if we hadn't done anything, then it would become an appointment after that 14 day period.
That's right. Or, or you can take a vote to, to appoint or...
Ratify.
To confirm the appointment or, or not.
I, I had one question, John. What's, what's the salary that she'll be given?
We, I think the salary we finally settled on, I think, I think it was 70?
Seventy.
It was 70,000. We initially started at 68 and the, the last accountant's position was paying 81. We reduced it by 5,000. So we have certainly been able to get somebody who's qualified.
So you had enough...
And I think we'll have...
You have, you have enough budgeted for this position?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Actually, there's enough budgeted so that the, the town accountant who's there now will be able to spend time with the new appointee the first two weeks in July, which works out nice.
Ken?
I have a few questions. Where was this job posted? Did you go through the municipal, the Beacon possibly?
MMA website and then it went to Monster and MM.
We advertise in the public, in, in the...
And in the newspaper.
In the newspaper, well, in the, in the local newspaper.
Was one of the requirements that they be a CPA or be working on their CPA?
No.
No.
And this, Suzanne has experience with our accounting software. Do we have new accounting software?
We, we, we have, not new, we have upgraded accounting software and part of the transition will be that we're gonna have KVS come down and train her as well as she's gonna be working with Barbara who worked on, Barbara who is the interim account, town accountant during the first couple of weeks of her start date, which is July 2nd.
So she hasn't worked with KVS, but I'm sure they're all fairly similar anyways.
No, she has. There's, KVS is in about 25 communities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Munis is the software that most municipalities in Massachusetts use. The problem with Munis is that it's a proprietary product, so anytime they have an upgrade or they have a release, it can cost you anywhere from $5,000 to $25,000 to $50,000, which is a huge amount of money with KVS. And the reason why we've chosen KVS and to stay with KVS is that upgrades are part of the package. You don't pay extra for it.
My last question is, you talked about the salary range. Does that include a car or no car?
No car.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Tom?
This is for the committee. Is any selectman on the selection committee?
No.
It's a, it's a, according to charter, it's a town manager's appointment.
No, I, I know, I'm just saying, I hit somebody from the finance committee.
Well, you know, and that, and I want to say that, and I want to, I'm gonna apologize to the finance committee because that actual issue never took place because we, we, I wanted somebody from the finance committee. Because I want this person to work very closely with the finance committee and provide the information that's necessary to the finance committee. But we didn't have anyone from the board of selectmen on, on the committee.
It just seemed to me that if we're gonna affirm or reject...
We didn't, yeah.
I'd like to see somebody on there in the future.
Yeah.
I understand that there were some circumstances here, but...
Well, I, I think, again, that's John's call. I mean, he puts together his finance team if he wants to have, oh, I think, research committee.
We, we had the finance team, I can tell you who interviewed, what, in a group interview was...
You, you don't have to, John, that's fine. I'm just saying, one man's opinion.
Yeah.
I just would like to see somebody from the selectmen on the selection committee, especially if we have to ratify or, or reject. What, what question I had in looking at her resume is I noticed she was just at Blackstone for one year.
Mm-hmm.
Why?
Well, she, she lives in...
I saw it.
A son, yeah, and, and she commutes all the way to Blackstone and...
She's in Blackstone now.
She's in Blackstone now and she's leaving for more money here and a shorter commute.
Okay.
One of the comments, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, but one of the comments said that the town wasn't able to pay her what she wanted.
Two weeks ago, there was a town meeting vote for a raise, they can't pay her what she's worth. That's according to one of the comments.
Right, financial decision and, and the commute is closer for her as well.
All right. So I guess that begs the question of Abington to a sonnet, is it that much shot at?
She said half.
What's that?
Half the distance from the sonnet to Blackstone.
All right.
Were you wondering why she was in Freetown for a short time?
That wouldn't, would be of interest.
That was, that wasn't...
I mean, she was, she was in Freetown for a number of years, from 97 to 2008 as a telecommunications specialist.
Right.
And then as the town accountant for two years, three years. I, I guess, when I look at it, it looks like she's got basically four years of accounting experience, not a CPA.
Right.
I don't know if a CPA apparently isn't required for the position.
No.
So what, what was the rationale with Freetown, what, what happened there or?
At Freetown, she, yeah, absolutely. She is the town accountant there, at Freetown, and there was a situation that arose, happened to be with the chief of police and there was, he was funding a cops grant. Not only...
So, I'm sorry, I...
He was funding, there was funding for the cops grant, but the chief of police was funding it also through the general fund. So when she brought that to his attention and called him on it, trouble ensued. In this situation, he happened to be a political friend of a selectman. It got very politically ugly and they made it difficult and that's the reason that she left and went to Blackstone and loves it in Blackstone, but this is financially a better decision and she's, she has a family and she should be able to spend more time with the family.
All right. And, and by numbers, how many applicants did you get for this position total?
Oh, we had a lot. I thought we had...
Fifty, 100?
Fifty, 70, something like that, yeah.
And what did you boil it down to to get your list of finalists, the...
Municipal experience.
No, no, how many did you actually either do a phone interview or bring in for an actual face-to-face?
We only interviewed two. That was the shocking thing of all the resumes that we received, there were only two that we felt qualified.
And that had public sector accounting experience?
Yep.
No one else didn't?
And the other candidate?
And they would all have to go and get certified?
They were, they were all private sector.
Yeah.
And this candidate, the other candidate, we would not choose. And this is, we feel strongly about this candidate. I think she'd be a great fit.
The other question, contractually, did I hear at one point that this person would be under an individual or personal contract with the town?
There, there was an, the...
Would it be part of a union? Would it not be a, what?
Well, that...
Did I hear at some point that the accountant was...
That, that's still up for discussion in relationship. There, there will be no contract. I, I, I feel very strongly about not having contracts for employees, although state statute, out of all the contracts that we have issued over the years, the only two legitimate contracts, Dory was, was listed as, as one, myself and the town accountant are, are the legitimate contracts.
Okay.
And we're, we're doing away with all of the, all of the, all of those contracts going forward. So she would not be a contract employee. She should be appointed yearly by the town manager or reappointed yearly.
Anything else? Somebody want to make a motion to affirm the town manager's...
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager's appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number 12, end of year intermunicipal transfers.
I, I think that Dory has worked up a sheet for you on the intermunicipal transfers?
Yes.
27,000, transfer 27,000 from tax title to Medicare. And that was the last transfer. I think the other ones we sent to the finance committee.
We did and there was just a couple of other small revisions, which I also sent to the finance committee. So this sheet differs slightly from the sheet that you had on Friday. I can just...
Do you want to go through it just so we have?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The changes or the, yeah, I'll...
Go through them all.
Okay. Item number one, there is no change in that and that is actually the article from the, Article 8, I think it was, from the special town meeting that we didn't get to. So that reflects...
Oh, that's, that's to pay that...
That's to pay town reports.
Pay the printer, yeah.
Yep, exactly. Item number two is to pay the, a member of the employee in the town clerk's office was working the rabies clinic. So that's the salary for that. Town building deficit, we're transferring, the difference there is 5,000, 68710 from health insurance to town office building and 1,000 from IT salaries. That stays the same. Selectment expense deficit, 7,500, that stayed the same. That's coming from IT salaries. That's because we don't have a network administrator in place. And town council deficit, the only change is there is the public health nursing is a little bit less at 4,000, 636 and then this additional 6,03169 from the health insurance. And the trash collection, we had originally had 35,000, is brought down to 30,000. And as town manager says, 27,000 from tax title to Medicare. And that will take care of all of our deficits at the end of the year, so it's not that many.
Is the total, is the total amount 44,16769?
Yes, that's just for the town council deficit.
Yeah.
I didn't add up the total.
Okay.
In each, each of the line items.
Is there, is there a limit to what transfers, the, the amount of money you can transfer at the end of the year?
Yeah. It's five, with 5%.
5% of the...
Of the budget?
Of the one you're taking it from, I believe.
Yeah.
And the finance committee is meeting this Wednesday and it's required that if you take this vote, they take the vote.
Mike?
What was the original line item for the town, town report? What, what did we carry for the, the warrant and the printing costs and, do we carry something in the, in the budget?
We do.
Do you remember?
I can't think off the top of my head what it is, though. I'd have to look it up.
What, what hurt us the most?
Oh, no, I understand, but the size of, you know, the physical size of 18,000 seems to be, I mean, were we shot on that line item? Was that typical?
Well, it, it also, I think, it included, I think, the fall town meeting.
Mm-hmm, there was an extra town meeting as well.
Yeah, you had, you had to have another warrant in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And you had that big thick packet.
It was the size of it, yeah.
Of all those...
That, that was 16,000. I think that was 16,000 alone. And the difference that we needed be, just for that large packet, we also ran a second special.
Yeah.
And we also had to send out, we had to advertise, we had to mail out to, to all of the inhabitants of the town. And we're still gonna have to do that again in, in the fall because we didn't get to the last couple of articles that would have straightened out the notification procedure to go from a postcard to, because a postcard has to have a specific address on it.
Yeah.
And we want to do bulk mailing and, and so in order to do that, it can't be a postcard. So we wanted to change that to a mailer of some sort that will give us the ability to do that, pre-carrier, pre-sort mail.
And then we can get the bulk rate as well.
Right. Otherwise, we have to send it out first, first class, which isn't gonna save us any money.
Right.
Tom?
I'm curious on the town council deficit. What, what was budgeted this year?
For the town council?
Yeah.
50, approximately 54,000?
54, yeah.
Yeah, 54, 55,000.
So we're up close to 100 with this? 98?
Yeah, I, I think so. And I think a lot, I think a lot of what drove that, I, I think was, and some of that is reimbursement, we're not gonna see it till the end of the fiscal year. There were a lot of housing complaints that were contested with the board of health and the fines that were assessed come back to the town, but it goes to general fund revenue versus to offset the legal budget. And I think that the amount might have been as high as about 18,000 from, from legal service that came back as fines for, for housing violations.
From the health? Health board?
Yes, from the health board.
How about some of these others? I mean, do you have an itemized...
Mm-hmm, we have all the bills.
But when, when you get a bill, would it say automated trash collection or health insurance change?
Absolutely.
Because I'd, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Just out of more curiosity.
What would you, what would you like to see?
I'd like to see all of them. How much do we spend on automated trash collection? How much was that legal service?
Well, automated trash collection doesn't start until July 1st.
No, I think he's, he's asking to see the bills from town council, all the bills that town council.
Okay.
Right, Tom?
Yeah. I'm just concerned, I, I think last year the budget was 34,000, don't know if it I'm just concerned, I, I think last year the budget was thirty-four thousand. Don't know if it went over or not.
We did.
This year we're up to a hundred.
We did.
And again, I, I-
I don't think it was ever thirty-four.
I looked tonight before I came. I-
Well, we- That's ma- that may have been what we had budgeted, was thirty-four, but we actually spent, I think it was fifty-eight.
Yeah.
And so, we budgeted fifty-four. And I think that if you took the eighteen thousand away from what we, what we have here, uh, which really comes back as fine revenue to the general fund, um, I think you, you would see that with respect to, um, town council services, um, we'd still be over, but it would be a little bit less than that.
Yeah.
It is, uh, Tom's thinking maybe it's time that we readjust our figure at the, for the next year's budget, just like we do the trash, you know? I mean, the, um, snow, snow budget, you bump that up a little bit. We know we're going over every year. Maybe we should increase a little bit for the, you know, three-year average or whatnot.
Hmm. It, it, you know, unfortunately, it's, it's not a, a, a perfect science, bu- uh, pu- public budgeting, um, and so sometimes, uh, we would like to be as, as close as we can to what we need, um, and if we don't have, uh, a number of housing cases this year, um, that number would be less by a certain amount. I don't know, you know, but we'll, we'll get you all the bills.
I would imagine the bylaw review committee was, was expensive too.
They, they used, they used town council quite a bit, didn't they?
Yeah.
That was a lot.
Well, the, yeah, bylaw review committee.
That, that's a good question, too, Kenny. It is, it seems to me that there used to be a policy that before any other town, board, department, whatever, that needed legal service would need to seek-
Approval.
Discussion or approval from the Board of Selectmen or the town manager.
On the town manager, the town manager.
And I did approve.
Okay, so that, that happens?
Yeah. It does happen. I, I did approve, and that's a good point, because Lauren Goldberg spent a lot of time with, um, the bylaw review committee, uh, with respect to making sure that the bylaws are written properly enough so that they would be passed by the Attorney General and not rejected. So, um, eh, there was a lot of money spent there. And you, you'll see where the money is spent. Um, most of the fifty-four thousand is broken out. Um, w- we don't pay for legal opinions. Legal opinions after it reaches a certain threshold, and I think that number, um, is like twenty-four thousand dollars, um, and litigation, and certain litigation. I think that legal, uh, legal opinions are, are opinions that don't cost us money in, in the setup that we have in the fee structure, and I can go, I-
Or maybe we can provide that to-
We can provide that.
I think that would be excellent, John, because that is a piece of information I, I didn't know, and-
We've had it before, yeah.
I, I think members of the board or others might be reluctant to seek a legal opinion, because for me, seeing this skyrocketing up, I would want to defer that until the new year came or whatever. So, I mean, if that's the agreement we have with Copeland and Page, I think that-
Right.
That would be good information for, at least for me.
And what's also included in this number is the legal counsel, I, I think, which, um, the special counsel that was hired, I, I think that number was about fifteen or fifteen hundred, almost sixteen hundred bucks.
I think the cell phone, the cell phone tower issue may have been costly, too. I mean, we were getting a lot.
Yeah, I'm sure that were. I'm sure that were.
It's all in the bills, and it, it'll also show what we don't pay for, as, as John was just saying. It's already covered.
And what they do is they give you the total bill, and then they minus what is coming out of that bill that is over the cap that we negotiated with Copeland and Page. So, you'll see, you'll see all that.
Just one point, Tom, on, on the town council line item itself. When we were doing the search for a new town manager, I think to a person, every town manager per- that we interviewed, a potential town manager, was astonished at how low our legal fees were, and thought it was not a good idea to have a line item of, I think at that point, that was twenty?
It was thirty-four, twenty-four for town council and ten for labor.
And they were just like, how can you people be doing business with a legal fee of thirty-four thousand dollars for a town with a forty million dollar budget?
Yeah, I'm sensitive to that on a forty-five million dollar budget, that in, in today's, you know, world of regulation and, you know, a lot of the others.
And also litigation. We, we get sued quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, whether it's zoning, whether it's planning, whether it's conservation, um, you know, and we've, we've been sued.
But if you can get that, maybe you can get that to the entire board.
Well, we'll provide you with all the bills, and, and I think that hopefully, it'll, it'll either do one of two things. You'll have more questions about what happened here or what happened there. Or, or we'll answer many of your questions. But we'll provide all of the, um, backup documentation for you, which we have to do.
Any other questions on intermunicipal transfers? Ken?
Any, um, town departments budgets that are affected by these votes, Council on Aging, Assessors, Library, Board of Health, they, they're all aware of these votes, correct?
They absolutely are. Absolutely. Oh, yeah, confirmed it with them before I take their money. Yeah. Definitely. No, it's a good question.
And now they gave you a hard time. They were all cool with it?
Oh, yeah. Well, except for Joe Collin Tony. He's a tough nut to crack. He didn't even make the list. But no, everybody was excellent, and we sent out, um, emails a couple of times to the departments, let, asking to let us know if you feel you're going to run short. Um, and these are the, it's not really a lot, these trend that were short. It's really not that much. Um, and there, there's reasons for it, and, um, so, yeah, no, everybody is very, very good about that, very helpful. They always are.
You do a vote from our board, and then the finance committee has to approve it, too?
That's right.
Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Item number thirteen, we're getting there. Discussion on ways to increase or come up with additional revenues.
I just want to throw this out there, uh, to the board, maybe, uh, we put this as an agenda item, and some members could come, different ideas, maybe think outside the box. We're always, you know, it's always kind of different to find a different ideas, and, and maybe not just additional revenues, but maybe if a department or, or you can come up with a cost-saving measure, that, that would mean additional revenues on the other, other side. So, I mean, I have several ideas I want to discuss. Obviously, it's getting late, but maybe other members can come, you know, to put it as an agenda item, a big discussion item, and just come up with some different ideas. Um, I'd also like to entertain, I know, I don't know if they did this after John left Mansfield or not, but Mansfield has a, a program where town employees can come up with ideas, and they receive, uh, a stipend or an award or some percentage of the cost savings. Because I, I don't, I don't think anybody knows better than town employees where there's waste or where there's, you know, have good ideas, because they're the ones that are in the trenches every day. So, that might be an idea that we could talk about, too. So, I just want to throw that on the table, because, and we're always talking about, oh, let's raise our taxes. Well, let's come up with, let's try to come up with some additional revenues. And I know this is a promise that I made, um, at the teachers' union meeting, you know, I, I told them not to put this as an agenda item, because, you know, it, it's not just us up here, you know, we're not the brightest bulbs, no offense, Mike, but there's other people that are watching on TV and, and, and town employees that can come up with some good ideas. So, I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I'd support it, given the lateness of the hour. I, I've got a list, but I, I would like to see a separate meeting, and I'd like to see like a five-year revenue plan with what you know and what the assumptions are, that we can start planning out and make sure our costs, uh, match what revenue we see. But I, I do have a specific one, because I know we have, um, representatives coming, um, Representative Deal, and I think Senator Keenan this week to give us a report. But, um, a couple, one of the things that, that, um, I want to say troubles me is when I look at municipal receipts and charges is charter school, um, tuitions and expenses. Abington gets, or at least I think with the Ways and Means Budget, we're scheduling at thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars as receipts for charter school, whatever that means. But my bigger concern is Abington is going to spend two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for charter school. And I, I'm not quite sure what that is. At a fundamental level, if it's, you know, public money for private education, I, I think that should be, um, discussed and, 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 you know, determine why are we getting this sort of a charge? You know, what's, what's going on? And it's not, it's not, um, um, oh, um, school choice. School choice is a separate line item. But certainly, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars would mean a lot to this town and employees and, you know, trying to, um, provide for town services and so forth. You know, the, the other that goes along those lines are veterans' benefits. I, I think we, we, Abington has always been generous. I think we upped that line this year.
We upped it every year.
And we're getting back thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred. You know, I'm wondering what might be happening there. Is there something that might be slipping through the cracks?
Um, as far as reimbursements, uh, what-
Yeah.
We're always a year behind our reimbursements-
Okay.
With respect to veteran benefits.
Okay.
So, um, and we get seventy-five percent back from the state as to what we spent.
Well, that could be.
So, so, next year, next year, we'll get last year's expenditures, and last year's was up, so that number will continue to increase. And, um, so, we're always a year behind, uh, with veteran benefits, so you can't, you can't look at what we're spending this year and say, well, how come we got thirty-eight thou- because we're always a year-
But would we reconcile, we spent X last year, would that thirty-eight thousand equal seventy-five percent of what we spent? I guess it would be a question if that is indeed the case.
That's state, that's a state reimbursement, though. I mean, that's coming from the state as part of the state aid.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So, I would think they make, do they make that calculation, or do you? You don't make that calculation, do you?
This, the state does.
No, the state does.
They enter the information, and the state does and sends out the reimbursement.
Yeah.
And Joe's very on top of that. He's excellent. We always get our reimbursements timely.
Now, that was one of the things I was going to raise, Tom, I think, which, which you're kind of alluding to, is the fact that it's, I know revenue at the town level is easy to look at, but we've been, for the last, what, three years, level funded? For local aid, two years prior to that, we were cut one-point-seven million dollars over a two-year period. We have never recovered that money.
Yeah, I, I'm with you.
So, that's where we should be banging, is on the state legislature's door.
They increased the sales tax one and a half percent.
And we didn't get anything from that either. Right, so it-
And the lottery was another one that all of a sudden, to solve the problem, we don't see the reports of how much- Abington is buying lottery tickets, which we used to get, should have got back a higher percentage. So, there's a lot of things like that that I'd, I'd like to discuss. Um, that's part of the agenda.
Yeah, I think, I think all of that is, is very doable. I, I would say that, you know, we've come a long way i- in a short period of time. When, when we, when I first got here, we had, um, um, negative free cash certification of seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. We had one thousand dollars in our, uh, savings account, which is known as our stabilization fund. We, this last year, we certified free cash at one million, one dollar. We have six-hundred-and-sixty-plus thousand dollars in stabilization, and we opened Station Two. We've hired some firefighters. We've hired some, um, people in certain positions, but we have not gone, um, I would say, over, overboard. We haven't provided raises, which then resulted in layoffs. Um, and I think the, the relationship that we have with the school department has worked exceedingly well, where we're sharing information from a financial perspective. So, I, I think that we're doing quite well from that perspective. In addition, we expect next year to save three hundred, approximately three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in trash alone. We just received, um, a federal grant for eight-hundred thousand dollars. I can't remember, I don't know if anyone remembers the last time. I know that seven years ago, the town applied for that fund, and, and it was, um, we didn't get it. Um, in every community that I have been in, whether it was Abington, uh, Man- Mansfield or Blackstone, we have received a minimum of eight-hundred thousand dollars in, in federal funds to our community. What that means for, for Abington is that we're going to rehab some homes for low and moderate income families so that they can continue to live in those homes. We're going to establish an outreach program, and, and all, it's going to be run through the Council on Aging, um, but the, the decision to go with Community Opportunity Group was a decision that was made collectively with myself and, and Suzanne and, and David. Um, a- and it's important that we take care of our residents and, and try to shift that burden to another tax source. In this case, it'd be federal money. So, um, I, I think that we're, we're trying to, to build up different ways in which we can save money. At the same time, look at ways in which we could generate additional revenue and, and manage what we have in a reasonable way so that we're not, um, finding ourselves in a negative cash flow perspective as we had when, when I first came here. So, I think that, um, that has worked out, you know, fairly well, and I think that there are a lot of different successes that we can point to. And I think we, we need to look at, and I love the idea of providing an incentive for department heads or employees to come up with cost-saving measures. And then, and we can, we can set a policy that basically says, if, if you can come up with a cost-saving measure that saves us at least X number of dollars, we'll provide you with, with an incentive percentage of that money that you save. And I think it works out well for us to do that, because those are the ways that allow us to save money.
Now, do you want to put this on an agenda or separate meeting for this discussion, or do you want to put it on for our next meeting?
I think it could fill up a whole meeting, and it, it would come to the board with ideas, you know?
I think we need to start planning. I know it's early for twenty fourteen, I think, budgeting, and we need to know where we're at. So, I don't think it would be inappropriate. And I, I just find, like, once I sit on, you know, you've been at it for three hours, and I think it's something, you should come in fresh and, um, you know, energetic to, um, discuss what I think is an important topic for us.
Do you want to leave it in my discretion to set it up? I mean, we'll do it in the next two or three weeks and see if we can-
We start, we start the next budget, uh, in, in, um, November. So, we're planning the FY fourteen budget as early as November, uh, of this year coming. So, um, you keep that, that timeline in perspective.
Yeah, uh, August, we're still only doing one meeting a month, right? So, maybe we could have a second meeting in August if you do this.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Kenny. I, I don't think we should be regimented to just one meeting per month. I-
I agree with it, yeah. So, all right, we'll do something in August.
The other point you made that, that, um, I think we all agree to was, um, you know, the concept savings is, is the same as earning. And if we can avoid costs, contain costs, eliminate costs, that falls, should fall to the bottom line. So, I, I think that's like another, you know?
But I also think there's ideas out there that, that haven't been tapped, and revenue sources that haven't been tapped that we're just, we're not thinking outside the box. I remember one year, um, someone was running for Sluckman, and they brought up the idea of using more energy-efficient police cars, and they were scoffed at, but you know what? It's an idea. Someone's, someone's throwing those ideas out. Let's discuss them, without laughing too much at my ideas.
All right, so we'll do that in August. Okay? Uh, item number fourteen, town manager report.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go.
There's only three things listed here, John.
Oh, well, I can talk for hours.
I know that.
I can't, you know what? I, I, this is my first day back, and-
You want to stand up instead of sitting?
No, I, I'm going to, I'm going to plow through this. It, it won't take us long. We have, um, initially, I had indicated to the, uh, board that we had received, um, that we were going to look to hire, um, a firm out of, out of Braintree. Comes to find out, come to find out after, um, our initial, um, discussions back and forth, that it, it would be better for us to go with a, a, another firm that is also, had been recommended to us by, um, the, the Historic Commission. Uh, Dalius, which is a group out of, um, I think they're out of Watertown.
Yep.
And the reason why is that Dalius i- is a, um, they, they focus on sculptures, monuments, and fine art. And so, their, uh, attention to the restoration of the arch, which is a, a monument in many respects, uh, is what they actually specialize in. They were the group that was initially down-
Yeah, they came down initially.
Yes, they came down initially.
He was an impressive guy.
And, um, we, uh, think, based on what we, we understand, and the issues that we had with the other group, um, trying to get, uh, to a final resolution was a little bit more difficult than we had anticipated. I think that they feel as though they can get some of the arch restoration work up and running, and probably get the, um, eagle, is it an eagle?
The eagle, yeah.
The eagle completed by the time- The eagle completed by the time we, we have our, our.
A rededication.
Rededication. So, there would be some, some work going on there. And the, the problem that we're having is that I don't want the same group that's doing the specifications, putting together the bid documents, doing the, the architectural renderings of what needs to be done. I don't want them to be the same group that does the work.
Town is illegal to do that anyway.
Right, there needs to be a check and balance. And most of, of these groups have been doing both. And my, my point to them is you can't. I, I don't want, because when you get to the construction phase, who's watching who? It's the same person who did the specifications that's now doing the work. So, we're, we're moving away from that concept, and we're looking at, at, at getting bids in to do the actual work from individuals who can do it, who, who are specialized in monument restoration, sculptors, sculptures, or whatever the case may be. So, we're, we're going to do it correctly in the sense that we're not, we're going to have a check and balance in place so that the work that's actually scoped out, actually bid out, is the work that actually is going to get done. And we're going to have one person, and it's not going to be the same person, watching themselves do the work. So, that was something that was very important to get clarified. And, and we finally got to that point. We got that clarification. And Dalius, Josh Crane, is the individual who is going to provide, I believe he's going to end up providing us with either the architectural work or the, or, or bid on, on the restoration piece. I think he's going to do the oversight because he has a tremendous amount of experience in, in sculpture and monument restoration. So, he'll know very quickly who's going to, who's going to be the better person to do the work. So, that, that piece is falling in place, and we'll have a contract completed soon. The other issue, I think, was the Groveland Street landfill. We expect that Groveland Street landfill to come in at about three point seven million. There needs to be a debt exclusion of some kind to do that. That's, that's an expensive tag. It's, it's very expensive. We appropriated, I think, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. S E A is still working on the two seventy-five number. We are getting close to completion of that two seventy-five, and we may have to come back at the fall or at the next annual for additional money to begin the second and third phase, which would be the landfill closure, capping, and maintenance.
You have a question? This proposal first was entertained, I don't know, probably seven or eight years ago. There was about seven different.
That's correct.
Different pricing things. And there was a price tag attached to each one of them. Is that something we're going to revisit as a town?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, because I think that, you know, with, if, if we can look at fifteen acres, and we can put a solar farm on that, on that, on that, on that acreage, we would have to have more fill material.
Correct.
To level it out than what we currently had at three point seven. So, this number could mushroom to four point eight or, or maybe closer to five million. But if we get a solar field up there, the developer who wants to put it up there may be willing to contribute to some of that closure. So, it may reduce our costs even further. So, we're going to be looking and thinking out of the box and somewhat creatively about ways in which we can close that landfill so it doesn't cost us as much as we anticipate. So, that, that's what we'll be working on. In, in, in Blackstone, when I, when I, when I was in, in Blackstone, we were looking at a huge closure cost. It was a larger landfill. And we closed it and made a half a million dollars on the closure. And we had the contractor who worked the landfill also pave all of the roots from going to the landfill and out of the landfill. So, everyone living on those streets had new streets at the end. And we were able to put money aside to do a regional recycling facility up there. So, there are different ways that you can, you can do this. And, and all of it is really thinking out of the box, which, which I like to do a lot of. And so, I, I look forward to, to working with the board on, on those, those types of issues, particularly as it relates to, to landfill closure. I've had experience closing landfills, so that, that's something that I'm excited about. And finally, the ten thousand dollars is, according to Senator Keenan, a very real possibility for the Tricentennial in the sense that he was able to tie it to the Senate President's budget amendment at the Senate level, which means that it's, you can't, you're not going to be able to separate it without taking money away from the Senate President's.
This is ten thousand dollars that's coming potentially through the state budget process, correct? That's going to be a grant to the town of Abington for the Tricentennial.
What do they call that pork barrels, Penny? Is that what it's called?
I don't know, but I think the Republic's sort of charged it somehow.
Anything else on the Town Manager Report?
That's it, other than.
Welcome back.
We got, we had eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I was very happy. I was so, so pleased to get that money.
That was very good thinking.
Yeah, it's going to help a lot of people.
Coincidence that happened when you weren't around?
I knew it was happening. I was calling people. I, I was, I think I mentioned it in the parade, that we were going to know by Friday. And it came out, what, Tuesday?
So, is that eight hundred thousand or eight hundred and fifty?
Two thousand.
Is that going to offset our budget next year? I mean, is that?
No, 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 it, it's for very specific use. It's going to, actually, we went in on a regional application with, with Whitman. So, we're going to do twenty units of housing. It's going to be twenty units of housing, rehabilitation housing. We're going to have money in, 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 in the budget for the Council on Aging for outreach purposes.
Is this low-income housing?
It's low and moderate income rehab housing. Somebody who has got to make a choice as to whether or not they're going to put food on the table or, you know, try, or move to a different location because they can't afford the house to live in. It's going to allow us the ability to rehab that house using public money in a program that's going to be run through the Council on Aging that's going to give residents who are, who are low, moderate-income families the ability to rehab whatever they need done, to bring their house up to code. Nothing more than bringing it up to code, whether it's a new roof, whether it's a septic system, whether it's a heating system, whether it's.
For the elderly.
It could be senior citizens, or it could be any low mod income family in town.
Within a certain, within a certain district, too. It's not the whole town. It's within a certain district in the town.
Yes, it's within a certain district. We, we approved this, the district plan. We went through that whole process, I think, several months ago.
Yes.
I think it's the Green Street area and the Mustafel Field.
Right.
Yeah. And, and those are really older housing stock areas of town anyway. And some of the housing stock is in need of refurbishment.
So, it's not building new condos, new apartment buildings, okay?
But what it will do is, is it will also, and I'm more excited about this than anything else, it's going to start an outreach program, I think, for shut-ins in the town. Is that correct, David? And what it's going to do is it's going to allow us to go in and do a social service needs assessment of the individual that's shut in. Do they need Meals on Wheels? Do they need medical attention? Do they need other types of social services, V N A? Are, are there such services that can then be coordinated by this individual? And I think that's going to go a long way because many people who live, who are shut-ins in the town of, of, of Abington have family, loved ones, who live on the, on the West Coast or live in Texas or Florida or somewhere else. And they, they're not here to, to see or know what their mothers and fathers or grandparents need. And so, we'll be able to provide that type of service for the first time. I think that is incredible, an incredibly important program for our seniors.
Is there some means test or income guidelines?
Oh, yeah. There, there'll be federal guidelines that are set up by HUD that we're going to have to follow because it's federal money. The money won't be available to us until probably, if I, if my experience serves me correctly, the federal budget is approved in, in October. We probably won't see the first dime of that money until November or, or December at some point. And we already have interest. We already have people calling. I had a call today. So, I put it on the website because it hasn't gotten in the paper yet, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Town Manager? Item number fifteen, public comment. Any public comments? No public comment. Anybody have anything else that they have?
I noticed that there used to be an agenda item, all the new business.
Right, we talked about that.
And what, what did we decide?
We didn't like all the new business because it leaves you open to open meeting law violations because your agenda is supposed to set forth what you're going to be discussing.
The new, new business.
Now, if you want new business as far as mentioning something to put on the agenda for next time, that's fine. But it's not going to be something where you bring in new business and we start discussing it tonight. That's.
You, you can't, you can't do that.
Can't do that. It's not a good idea.
I, I mean, the agenda has to reflect exactly, or as, as reasonably possible through the chairman's initiative from, from its membership, exactly what we can anticipate that's going to be discussed in that meeting. It, it provides advanced notification to residents who want to be here.
So, people have notice of what you're going to be discussing if they want to be here to view the meeting. They're here to view the meeting.
So, you see that I have, as Town Manager's report, I can't just bring up anything. I have to stay close to what's under the Town Manager report.
But again, if you have things that you want to bring up to discuss at the next meeting, that's, there's no problem.
I already emailed, I think, you on that, so I'm assuming that will be on the next meeting.
Yeah. And I did have one also. I had a, a question from somebody on the Disability Committee, that that hasn't been active and that I guess there may be members that have been appointed, but they haven't met in a number of ye- years, I think. So, is that something maybe we can take a look at just to see who's on there? If they're actually interested in still being on there? And if not, then maybe we can get that reactivated.
I don't, I don't think it's up to its full membership. I don't think it ever has been.
I know, I think there's one person on it, the Commission on Disabilities, I think.
Maybe if that's something we can look at for the next meeting.
Yeah.
We can always, we can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second? By roll call, Mr. Deon? Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Rainey? And Mr. Irvine votes yes. We will not be reconvening.
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz, yes. We will not be reconvening. Okay.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. By roll call, Mr. Deion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Franny?
Yes.
And Mr. Irvine-Boltz?
Yes.
We will not be reconvening.
We can always advertise that.
Yes. And now, we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session for a status update on all collective bargaining agreements which are outstanding as of June 18th, 2012, and not to reconvene.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?